Josh, you ready? Okay, bye.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, August 25th, and it is 7:30 PM. We are here to hold a special session. We will now hold a board hearing on a grievance appeal from members of the Oregon City Education Association alleging violations of Article 22, Section B1 of the OCEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. The board will be hearing from members of OCEA and the district administration tonight. After we hear presentations, we will take action to either uphold or reverse the superintendent's decision related to this grievance. Each party will have 15 minutes to present and an additional five minutes for each witness called. Each party will designate a spokesperson authorized to cross-examine any witnesses called by the other party and will have five minutes to cross-examine those witnesses per Article 8, Section C8 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. After each party's time has expired, each party will have an additional five minutes of rebuttal. The board will have an opportunity to ask questions of the parties before deliberation. Parties are asked to remain professional and refrain from personal attacks. Members of the audience are to remain quiet. An audience member yelling, shouting, or being disruptive will be asked to stop and may include further sanctions up to including a request for the person to leave the meeting. Such warning will not count against the presenter's time. Additionally, as board chair, I have authority to establish order in this meeting and do so by reserving the right to impose any sanction deemed necessary for violating the ground rules set for this hearing up to and including a request for any participant or patron to leave. Parties who engage in personal attacks will be asked to stop. Such warning will not count against the presenter's time. The following ground rules will be enforced during this hearing. Participants must address their presentation to the question currently before the board. No complaints regarding events that have occurred outside the scope of this grievance are outside the scope of the hearing. Participants will address the board as a whole. They may not direct questions to individual board members. Participants will observe the time limits and respect the timekeeper's notice that time has concluded. Our board secretary will serve as our timekeeper, so Holly will keep time for us. All participants will speak at a respectful tone and volume. No personal attacks will be allowed. Board members will reserve their questions to the question and answer period after all the parties have presented. As I mentioned, Holly will support with timekeeping, and both parties are expected to respect the timing. OCEA shall present its case first. Do the parties have any questions before we proceed?
Yeah, I have one question. The options that the board has at the end are just like yes or no.
So we will determine if we are going to uphold or reverse the decision of the superintendent, and if we uphold the grievance, then we will further deliberate to determine what solution needs to be, needs to take place in order to remedy the problem.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Turkowski, if you would please begin.
Sure. All right. So, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Wilson, and the rest of the board, and also Dr. Spitzer and Mrs. Norman for taking the time to hold this hearing tonight. I recognize that all of your time is valuable and that everyone is very busy as we start the new school year. I want you to know that we wouldn't have asked for this hearing if this issue wasn't important to us. We come to you this evening to ask you to overturn the district's denial of our Level 2 grievance over Article 22 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement and the associated extra duty schedule. Before I get into the details of the grievance, I want to take a moment to talk about what it's like to try and move something up the chain in the Oregon City School District, what it's like to try and get someone to hear you out, to treat a serious issue with the attention it deserves. It's been an illuminating experience encountering the administrative culture of the Oregon City School District as we pursued this issue. The most confounding part of this process has been encountering a formal language of teams, processes, and committees, but finding out that none of this formal language is ever put into writing. The district often makes quick and unilateral decisions on things that it deems important, all the while maintaining this illusion of teams, committees, and processes which are mostly reserved as tools to postpone or delay changes that they don't want to make. Let me give you an example. As part of this grievance, we suggested several potential remediations that could be implemented to help address the concerns of the members filing it, all of which I'll discuss shortly. The district, in denying all of these remediations, repeatedly referred to the need to accomplish these changes "through bargaining" and through "appointed teams" and the need to go through "a committee." However, in the midst of this process, we've come to find out that the district has, in fact, regularly made exactly the kinds of changes we are asking for, such as adjusting the extra duty schedule or adding new positions, whenever it wants to, for whatever reasons it wants to, spending money at will with no process that we've been told about, no committees, and no need to bargain for any of it. The message from the district has been clear: processes for thee, but not for me. It's exactly because of this culture that the extra duty schedule has become what it is today: a giant mess, a mess created by a decade of inaction interspersed with unilateral decisions that defy the supposed reason for that inaction, creating a system of entrenched inequality that has spanned over a decade. Quite frankly, this is a situation that makes little sense, especially considering the fact that the district signed a memorandum of understanding with the association in January of 2023, which promised to form a committee to address exactly the issues that we bring before you today. In fact, it promised that this committee would address the problems within the extra duty schedule by the expiration of the current CBA, which, as I'm sure you know, expired last spring. So, it's been three years since that MOU was signed, and there is no committee, there is no process. The district appears to do what it wants when it wants. That is why we are here tonight. So, let's get to the substance of the grievance itself, which has three main elements. The first violation that we're alleging is in Article 22, Section B1 of the extra duty schedule. And it states very clearly, "Compensation for all contract extra duty shall be determined by the extra duty salary schedule in Appendix A and B." Let me read that again. "Compensation for all contract extra duty shall be determined by the extra duty salary schedule in Appendix A and B." This clause leaves little room for interpretation. And yet, over the span of several years through a series of unilateral or informally agreed upon decisions, the district has added and subtracted extra duties to this schedule at will, leaving us in a position where the extra duty schedule that exists in the contract itself bears little resemblance to the extra duty schedule that exists in reality. So, very quickly, here's what the extra duty schedule looks like in the contract. You can't see any of that, but there's stuff there. And here's what it looks like in reality when you add what the district is actually paying for. So you'll notice that there are several, I believe 11, that are shaded in red that the district no longer pays for. Some of those have been combined with other ones. You know, the district can stop paying for extra duties, that's not against the contract. But in addition to those extra duties disappearing, they've also added all of the extra duties, and I think a few that I actually did not make it on there in the original grievance, sort of when they wanted to. So, amidst all these changes... Oh, excuse me. So, all of these extra duties have been added at a different time, for a different reason, decided by different people, using a different unwritten criteria for selection and payment. Again, the contract is very clear on this, and this is not a small problem, as it creates a perfect environment for the other pieces of this grievance. So this leads me to violation, alleged violation number two of Article 22, Section C1, which states that "Payment shall be based on time and duration of responsibility. Payment for similar responsibilities and experience shall be consistent throughout the district." Amidst all of these informal changes made to the extra duty schedule over the last decade, the original extra duty schedule has remained intact. Now, I didn't work here 10 years ago when this document was most recently updated, so I can't say whether or not these flaws are due to imperfect assumptions upon its creation or to changes that have occurred in the duties themselves in the last decade. But it only takes a cursory look at the schedule to see that duties with "similar responsibilities and experience" are not being compensated similarly throughout the district. Some examples, and I just list them all here. The first and most obvious example of a violation here of this provision is the compensation for our high school drama director. Again, you didn't get a lot of time to look at the schedule, but high school head coaches in all sports are paid in Category A, as they should be, it's the highest category on the extra duty schedule, due to both their expertise and necessary time commitment involved in coaching a single season of sports. And yet, the drama teacher at the high school is paid less than them at the Category B level, despite being required to rehearse for and conduct three plays per year. That's in her job description, she must conduct three plays a year, and then she does a fourth one just for fun. So she does four plays and gets paid less than a high school head coach. The next example is forensics, otherwise known as speech and debate. It's a similarly stark example of this disparity. Our speech and debate coach is paid at the Category E level, which is less than half of what a head coach makes, despite leading an OSAA sanctioned activity and having an extensive time commitment to the activity, easily comparable to or exceeding the hours that head coaches put in. Example C, the third one here. Team leaders at the middle school and key teachers at the elementary school are paid roughly two-thirds of what high school department chairs are paid, despite similar and potentially greater responsibilities in those department chairs. In the last two examples, we have National Honor Society, which is listed at the Category K level, which is less than one-third of the stipend offered for many positions with similar levels of responsibility. And then we have high school and middle school vocal music and instrumental music, I've kind of mashed them all together, they're paid less than their time and responsibility when compared to similar positions such as assistant coaches. So I'm not going to belabor this piece of the grievance, although it's, you know, arguably this is the part that kind of got us, that we dove into it because of, is because of this inequitable piece. But I've got witnesses that are going to testify in more detail about this. So finally, I'm going to address the third piece of this grievance. "After years of not following the contract, the district has not felt compelled to create a fair or coherent system for adding new extra duties to this schedule. As I previously stated, but it bears repeating, the administration adds extra duties to the schedule when they want, for a variety of reasons, some are better than others, but none with a clear rationale, process, or procedure that is easily duplicable for well-meaning teachers to add or propose new duties, which could provide clear benefit to our students. For instance, last spring, the district added cross-country cheer and swim to Category A of the extra duty schedule, not the one in the contract, the real one that exists sort of in a cloud somewhere. This was done with no committee, no bargaining, no process, and no element to the decision-making process written down anywhere. And while these positions almost certainly deserve their place on the schedule, it leaves all the other people who've been told about the importance of a separate process wondering, how did this happen? How did they get that? How do we get an extra duty added to the schedule?" And the answer from the district has been crystal clear: you can't. So, that's the substance, those are the three pieces of the grievance itself, and this is where I'd like to get to some potential remediations that I suggested. You'll notice as I go through these that we are not advocating moving any teacher to a lower category of pay or asking that any duty currently being paid out be removed. Our remediations are about lifting teachers up, and we are not advocating any solution which attempts to cut the pay of any educators in any way, and we would not accept any remediation which robs Peter to pay Paul. So, the first remediation that we have here, to bring the districts into compliance with Article 22, Section B1, please see the attached extra duty schedule.
And go ahead.
And it looks pretty similar. Adding the stipends in green, removing the stipends in red would have an extra duty schedule in the contract that matches reality. The second remediation that we have, to comply with Article 22, Section D1, please see the attached proposal again. This uses yellow color coding to demonstrate positions that have been moved up to match positions that are of similar, basically, time commitment and responsibility. Forensics has been moved up to the head coaching level. We split actually drama into three separate stipends. And then, you know, the key teachers at the elementary school, team leaders at the middle school are moved up to match the high school department chairs, and then instrumental and vocal music are moved up as well, just to denote the time that they put in. And again, please note that we are not advocating reducing anyone's pay or removing any duties. Remediation number three, in a reasonable timeframe, the district should create a formal and clearly laid-out process for any licensed member to propose additions to the extra duty schedule and have them presented before the board. This will prevent similar violations of the contract in the future. Number four, in the future, the district shall not end payment for any extra duties nor add any extra duties to the schedule without a mutual written agreement with the association and a public announcement to all licensed members of the change. Okay, so those are the remediations. "In the district's decision to deny this grievance, they stated that the remediations are best accomplished through the bargaining process." That was a quote. "In some respects, this is certainly true. Remediation one can be accomplished with adjustments through bargaining, and the OCEA proposal that is currently on the table for Article 22 would finally create a formalized process for updating the extra duty schedule on a regular basis, which would fulfill remediation number three. However, bargaining is one thing, contract enforcement is another. If the union is unable to enforce current language, especially language whose violation has essentially become common practice, what is the hope of enforcing future language established through the bargaining process? Especially when, in this case, we have a recent precedent: the MOU signed by the district and association in January 2023. This MOU stated in no uncertain terms that a committee would be formed to address and update the extra duty schedule. If the solution in the next CBA is for the district to plan to form yet another committee, we have no confidence that they will follow through on the promises to make the extra duty schedule more equitable. We recognize that this is an ambitious grievance that interacts with many moving parts, especially in the midst of collective bargaining. But the teachers in this room have been asked to wait so many times that the question becomes, is this important or not? The district denied this grievance in total while offering not even a hint of urgency, not a hint of a timeline, not a hint that the staff in this room will be involved even a little bit in the solutions that will come. In the ensuing four months, no one has contacted any of the teachers in this room to ask, how many hours do you put in? What kind of work are you doing? Can you help us figure this out? We're told that the district needs to write "job descriptions first," which is part of this unwritten procedure, "to be accomplished by we-know-not-who, to be completed we-know-not-when, followed up by further procedures written down we-know-not-where." All the while, there's a different unwritten process through which the district could continue to add whatever extra duties they see fit at any time of their choosing in clear violation of the contract. So, what impact does this have on our student? A budget, any budget is a moral document in which an organization sets its priorities. And what does the current extra duty schedule and associated systems say about the priorities of the Oregon City School District? Here's what I see when I look at it. I see a district that values athletics over academics and the arts. I see a district that values the work done at the high school over the work done at the middle and elementary schools. I see a district that thinks that the teachers who run Oregon Battle the Books at the elementary school should work for free. A district that believes that the Science National Honor Society or the journalism programs at the high school should be run by volunteers. A district that is okay with the fact that Oregon City High School no longer offers programs like Model UN or Mock Trial. I see a district that thinks that all students deserve to belong, but some more than others. So to my mind, the question in front of the board tonight is, how can we resolve this grievance in such a way that gives the teachers in this room confidence that their concerns have actually been heard, that this will not continue to be pushed off forever and ever, that the district will follow the next iteration of the contract despite the fact that it regarded this iteration as a list of suggestions, that the district believes that every student in the district deserves to belong, regardless of whether their interests lie in athletics, academics, or the arts? I leave these questions to you. Thank you.
Thank you. You may call your first witness.
Sure. First witness is Jory Jones, drama teacher at Oregon City High School.
And Ms. Jones, if you could just make sure your green light is on.
It is on. Thank you.
You may begin.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jory Jones. I am the drama teacher at Oregon City High School. This is my sixth year at OCHS and as the full-time theater teacher and running the after-school theater program. I don't know if any of you, any of you board members have had the opportunity to come and see one of our drama productions at OCHS, but if you haven't, I hope you take the time to do so this year. Believe me when I say, we have an incredible theater program at our high school. We put on high-quality productions that are professional-grade. We win awards, we attend state competitions, we run fundraisers, we host socials. My students and I have created a community that keeps growing year after year, and we have well over 100 active Despian members. Those are 100 players that I am in charge of, 100 students that have found a safe place to be in OCHS. 100 students. Think about that. That's crazy. That is over double the size of the varsity football team. Our head football coach definitely works hard down at the stadium, but he's got a team of assistants to help him. And after football season, well, he gets a break until next season. And as for me, I've still got three more productions and competition to get through. And before you ask, Jory, why not do just one show? Well, I've been asked that before, and I am actually contracted to do three shows a year. A pattern that my colleagues and I have noticed with our current extra duty schedule is the inequality of pay for activities in our district. Most people don't know how much time and effort is put into running a theater program, so I will break down just one of the shows that I do. Our fall musical this year is Mamma Mia, and that starts in September, and we rehearse Monday through Friday through November 14th from 3:30 to 6:30. November 15th through 19th are tech and dress rehearsals until 10:00 PM with two weekends of performances, that are eight shows, where we close and strike the show December 8th. That is roughly 200 hours of work, and that is being very generous. And that's just one of my shows. We do four a year. I do one show August to September, the next being September to I do one show August to September, the next being September to December, competition season, and our student-directed production December to February, and our last show March to May. Out of the 160 school days, there are only 27 days that I do not have a rehearsal, performance, or thespian event after school, not even a full month of days off. Asking to be paid a fair amount isn't revolutionary. Actually, we are one of the only schools in the Portland metro area that still pays their head drama teacher less than their head football or basketball coach. And yes, I said head drama. Many schools have assistant or second drama teachers. For David Douglas School District, the highest-paid extra duties are football, basketball, and drama at 16%. The director for their musical gets an additional stipend. In North Clackamas School District, the drama teacher gets paid more based on the pay schedule. Lake Oswego-Lakeridge School District gets paid $8,000 per show. I do four. For Beaverton School District, high school drama and high school musical director are two different categories, each in classification A. I do both. In Portland Public Schools, if drama teacher does more than three productions, which I do, the extra duty pay is more than the head football and basketball coach. In Tiger-Tewallaton School District, the only activity in category A are basketball, football, and track and drama. In Gresham-Barlow, you get the idea. Even in Mulhalla, the drama extra duty pay is the same as the head coaches. The Oregon City Drama Department is one of the largest and most vibrant programs at OCHS known for its strong attendance, enthusiastic support, and deep community connection in high student involvement. Its success comes from the welcoming environment we've built. The extra duty schedule has been neglected for far too long for everyone, not just activities. The disparities between our time and pay isn't adding up and needs to be revised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So wait right there, just in case the district has any questions for you.
Oh, sorry.
We don't have any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You may call your next witness.
Next, I'd like to call Evan Howells, teacher at Gardner Middle School.
Tamwata Middle School.
Love my Gardner colleagues, but Tamwata.
Thank you all for hearing us speak tonight. My name is Evan Howells. I've been teaching at Tamwata Middle School for 14 years, all as an English Language Arts classroom teacher. I am speaking as a middle school representative and kind of an elementary school representative for the extra duty portion of our contract. As someone who has held an extra duty position for several years now, I've seen some discrepancies that I think with some simple tinkering can create a lot more transparency and equity throughout our district. I have been a middle school team leader for seven years now, two as a seventh-grade lead, and I'm starting my fifth as an eighth-grade team leader this year. I lead a team of core teachers, English, math, science, and social studies, who all share the same students. I'd like to break what this means down into three sections. One, how does this role impact me in my life at school? Two, how this role impacts colleagues and the school culture? And three, and most importantly, how this role impacts students and families? First of all, I love being a team leader. I like being someone who others in my building come to for help and guidance, and I like knowing that I'm doing a little extra to support my team, my community, and my students. In this role, I'm responsible for organizing whole-team events, such as field trips, as well as scheduling 20 individual student conferences during each of our two conference sessions, which is quite the endeavor we start about six weeks in advance of conferences to get those scheduled. I also create a newsletter in English, Spanish, Russian, and/or Ukrainian that goes out every two or three weeks with team-wide updates and announcements, college readiness tips, updates from each individual teacher on the team, and more. This is an important tool that helps our families feel connected with what's going on in the school. Second, being a team leader has an impact on our school culture. We take part in leadership meetings twice a month, where we look at what seems like hundreds of different things, from an issue coming up in our school, such as an increase in biased language or opt-out behaviors, and then problem-solving those concerns, to looking at the strategic plan, school improvement plan, and avid site goals to determine what our school needs to do to push forward towards each set of goals and initiatives. We also attend a yearly leadership retreat in the summer, where we look at school-wide big-picture systems that we want to address in the coming year. Lastly, I love this job because I get to better serve students on my team and in my school. We're responsible, as leaders, for creating and maintaining an agenda, and then facilitating weekly meetings with our core teams of teachers, where we address behavioral, social, and/or academic student concerns down to the individual student. We bring in and are supported by our counseling department, specialists, IAs, and administrators during these meetings so that no student is missed or forgotten. This is where we are leading the creation of interventions for students we are monitoring academically or behaviorally. We want to be sure that each student feels a sense of belonging, that they know there are people looking out for them in our school and who are working hard for them. Since I've been in this role, middle school team leaders have always been placed at a lower level than our high school department heads. It's never been communicated to me why we're not on the same level, but the fact that elementary and middle school are lower just doesn't make sense and hasn't for a while. My hope is that by opening this process, there can be more transparency about the placement of positions on the extra duty list, and that the extra money people are paid is equal and equitable to the amount of time and work being put into their individual roles. I'd like to end with a quick anecdote that's not about my team leader role, but is another example why this process needs to be opened, and that's regarding the inclusion of more of our elementary colleagues. Both my sons are proud Oregon City students, one at Tamwata and one at Holcomb Elementary.
One minute.
They have both been afforded the opportunity to be a part of their school's community of Oregon Battle of the Books, or OBAB, participants. Not only does OBAB have a focus on literacy, it's a program that has helped both my sons read new books with diverse protagonists and talk about those books with students they normally wouldn't get the opportunity to collaborate with, broadening their social circles and their sense of belonging in their schools. OBAB is currently not on the extra duty schedule, and the teachers that run these programs are doing an inspiring amount of work, writing grants to have books donated, organizing and meeting with groups, and facilitating book battles, all in the service of students and all without the designation of placement on the extra duty schedule. Just one more reason I hope we can find ways to enter new and exciting opportunities our staff is bringing to our students to the extra duty schedule. Thank you so much for your time.
Director Norman, do you have any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
All right. Next up, I would like to call Erin Cole, teacher at Oregon City High School, I'm pretty sure.
My name's Erin Cole. I'm a science teacher at OCHS, and I'm advisor to the Science National Honor Society. I'd like to tell you a little bit about this organization at the high school. We are a chapter of a national organization with membership requirements and bylaws. The purpose of this club is to promote and carry out science communication education, science career exploration, and science-based community service. Some of the activities we do are host guest speakers at the high school for students to learn about various science careers. We do volunteering with local environmental organizations like SOLV and Clackamas River Basin Council. We have traveled to Newport to experience the Marine Science and STEM Career Day at the Hatfield Marine Science Center, where students learned about marine research from Oregon State researchers. Members are also required to present to the club on a science topic of their choice. To be an official member, students are required to be taking a certain number of science classes, maintain a certain science GPA, and participate in a certain number of activities with the club. An official member gets a cord for graduation and is eligible to apply for a scholarship from the national organization. However, we also welcome unofficial members who might not meet these requirements but want to participate in our activities and learn about science careers. We usually have about 20 official and 20 unofficial members. For a few students, this is the only club or activity they participate in at OCHS. This club is important to the school district goals of career exploration, as well as fostering a sense of belonging. This club is similar in structure to National Honor Society, whose advisor is deservedly on the extra duty pay schedule, I believe in category K. Their advisor works many hours outside of the school day to help facilitate their club. Our club, Science National Honor Society, appeals to students who both want to do service through a scientific lens and captures some students who don't meet the requirements for NHS. I would like to continue to advise this club. I like it a lot. It's great. However, if I cannot, I worry that this club will disappear because the advisor position does not have a stipend. I spend many hours per week helping our student leadership team, plan events and meetings, attend events on the weekends with students, and fundraise for buses and event fees. I've asked for several years to many people what the process is for adding a club to the extra duty pay schedule. No one seems to know the answer. I get told to ask other people who also don't know any answer. It's very frustrating and confusing that there seems to not really be a process for adding a club to the schedule that is similar in rigor to others and has significant value to the high school student body. I hope you can help remedy the situation, and thank you so much for your time.
Director Norman, no questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony.
All right. Next up, we have Patrick McDonald from the high school.
Good evening.
My name's Pat McDonald, and I'm an English teacher here at the high school. This is my 26th year with the district. Extra duty stipends are how a district shows support for work that goes above and beyond what's outlined in job descriptions in the contract. It shows what kind of programs the district values and the amount of work that it takes to have a successful program. And when I was first, when I first came to Oregon City in 98, one of the things that really impressed me about the school and the district was their student journalism program. If you've been in the district for a while, you might remember The Elevator. It's been around for over 100 years. It's a student publication. And I saw that and thought, wow, what a really cool way to build community, get kids in leadership positions, create culture in the school that was really positive. And it just, it was the thing that won me over on the school itself. It was why I decided that I wanted to work here. And for several years, I was the advisor of that publication, and it was, it was a wonderful So, The Elevator itself ceased publication sometime in the late aughts, during some of the budget cuts, the austerities, the furlough days and things like that. The program itself sort of went away. It hasn't actually been in publication with any kind of regularity. We still have a journalism club. We have a journalism elective class, but it doesn't produce the same sort of output that, say, I have something from 2002 here, which is a 16-page printed copy that was produced, written, edited, and produced by students all within about a four-week period. And it took a lot of work to get that out, and we would have a publication schedule, and we would do it pretty regularly. And so, schools, anyways, for many years, the journalism advisor thing was one of those things that was listed in the extra duty contract, but nobody was really doing it, and so it just kind of disappeared for a while. After a while, it's not there anymore. However, schools that have continued to support student journalism since then have increased their digital footprint and made the move to the 21st century. They have online publications, they've got broadcasting, they've got greater career and technical education stuff, opportunities for students. And it's often a sign of a really robust culture in the school, where students have leadership positions and they're driving conversations. It's super healthy. You only have to look across the river to Westland to see what they're doing with their work over there, and it's quite impressive. So, personally, I'm of the mind that you just can't have a world-class school if you don't have a strong student journalism program. Allowing students, teaching them how to use the power of the press, and how to write for publication, and drive conversations, and have that happen is key. And without it, I just don't think the school can ever really quite be what it could fully be. But you can't build a strong program on just simply the goodwill of teachers, and it can't be a passion project for only one individual teacher. You need to support it systemically and financially. And that goes for all programs that we see having values for students, who we've heard from my colleagues tonight. So, I'm not advocating that the journalism program needs a stipend at the moment, but if it were to ever return to what it was, if you want to hire people in the future to get this program to where it needs to be, that's how you support a program like that. And one of the remediations was being able to open things up so that you can support things, because it's going to be good for kids, and you know it's going to be good for kids, and you want to hire the people and support them with that. So, thank you very much.
Hold up, just one, just one second. Do you have any, oh, sorry. I just didn't know if the district had any questions for you, but they do not have any questions. You're free to go. Thank you so much.
All right. And one last witness, we have David Behringer from the high school.
My name is Dave Behringer. I teach English at OCHS, and I've coached our speech and debate team for over 20 years. I was recently voted by my peers in the speech community as Oregon Speech Educator of the Year, and I'm here tonight primarily to focus on the impacts of this contract on my activity and to advocate for changing our system to encourage more academic extracurriculars. First and foremost, thank you for hosting us and listening to our grievance. I know the very nature of filing grievance can seem confrontational or combative, but our goal is to encourage this district to move towards a more fair and well-thought-out system in service to our students by expanding academic extracurricular offerings. I only have five minutes, and there's no way I can cover everything I'd like to say, so I'd like to invite the board to ask me questions at the end of my testimony. I'd love to share as much information as I can. First, our current system is deeply unfair to coaches and advisors of academic extracurriculars. It prioritizes athletics, and other activities seem to be only an afterthought. The biggest piece of evidence I can offer in my limited speaking time would be my position on the extra duty scale. Despite my activity being an OSAA event, I am paid less than half of other OSAA coaches. In fact, I'm paid less than all the assistant coaches, too. Other OSAA coaches are in category A, assistant coaches are in category D, and I'm down in category E, making, again, less than half of any other coach of an OSAA activity. Lest there be a question about exactly how intensive our activity is, I'd like to point out that we attended, in the past season, more than 25 days of competition. And to clarify, a day of competition typically involves leaving the school at about 6:30 a.m., competing in multiple rounds all day, and returning to the school around 9:30 or 10:00 p.m. This is not something that is done for a few hours after school. That is a full-day commitment that usually demands a 12- to 15-hour day. When we hold the Diana Vasquez Duque Invitational at OCHS, we host over 35 schools with over 400 students competing in over a dozen different events, making it one of the largest speech and debate tournaments in the entire Pacific Northwest. Needless to say, this activity, while not having a high profile like football or basketball, demands significant time commitments, and yet, again, is paid less than half as much. This has been a source of much personal frustration over the past few years, which leads to my second point. The district has not made meaningful progress towards rectifying this inequity. As Stephen has mentioned, included in our contract is an MOU dated January 2023 that says that they, quote, "shall continue their work to review the extra duty and activity pay schedules through the extra duty activity pay committee," end quote. Note the word "continue," which implies that work was already underway to address a problem they already knew existed. It has now been almost three years since that MOU was signed, and I've yet to see any sort of progress at all. No one has ever asked me what my coaching position entails, how much time it takes, what my duties are, how many competitions we attend, who is on this committee, what goals have they drawn up, what progress have they made, and who are they accountable My last and most important point focuses on the larger issue of what it takes to create a world-class education for our students, that our students deserve, and to uphold core components of our district-wide school improvement plan. There has been a lack of action to revisit the extra duty pay schedule, and in that vacuum, several sports have been added in what amounts to an end run around the in what amounts to an end run around the contract and the negotiating process. Now, please don't get me wrong, I'm very glad that these sports have been added. In fact, they should have been added a long time ago and could have been if the district had followed through with their promise to revisit the extra duty schedule. We've also seen several academic extracurriculars disappear because they lacked the, because they didn't have the funding and lacked the publicity and profile of something like cheerleading, one of the recently added sports. OCHS used to have a model United Nations team, but that disappeared when the teacher retired because it didn't have funding, a budget, or a coaching stipend. We used to have a mock trial team, but again, without a stipend, there's no way for that program to continue unless someone else wants to step up and work for free. Over and over, this seems to be the pattern. If it's sports-related, we'll find a way. If it's an academic activity, you're on your own. Athletics should not be the only way students have to connect with a school. And if we're serious about our school improvement plan goals about belonging and well-being, connection, and college and career readiness, we need to do a better job of creating the ecosystem and infrastructure for academic extracurriculars. I've had judges and lawyers reach out to help me with a mock trial team, but I have no one to connect them to. If we simply rely on teachers to create these activities as a passion project, we're not creating the infrastructure needed for long-term, robust programs. That process begins with the remediations that we are seeking in this grievance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, there's no further questions. You can step down. Thank you. Mr. Tukarski, is that all of your witnesses?
Yes.
So, at this time, we'll transition to the district's presentation. Director Norman?
Thank you. Good evening, directors. Thank you for your time this evening to review the information and determine if there has been a contract violation. I also want to acknowledge and appreciation for all of the staff members who came tonight to share their experiences and let us know the challenges that they've faced over the last several years. As you heard, there is a need for this work to be done. I will use my time to address each of Mr. Tukarski's grievance issues and share the perspective that was taken when the grievance was previously submitted. As outlined by Mr. Tukarski, the grievance addresses three main issues regarding Article 22 of the OCEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. The first is that stipends for positions exist that are no longer offered. There are extra duty positions listed on the extra duty schedule, such as freshman, sophomore, and junior class advisors that are not offered by OCHS at this time. It is a common practice to only fill the extra duty positions as needed. The schedule dictates the compensation required for the position should they be used. As with all of our jobs, not filling the positions does not violate the contract. The district retains discretion on whether to fill any position. Since the formal evaluation of the positions in 2014, needs within the schools have changed and evolved. As you've heard, things have changed a lot over time. We will not and cannot always fill each stipend position. In fact, it was a conscious decision to leave several of the stipends on the schedule should there be a need for them in the future. One of those examples would be the Medicaid billing. This, however, is not a violation of the contract. Number 1B. Extra duty activities or extra duties not on the schedule. Several extra duties, including ITeam Coordinator, Equity Committee Chair, and Avid Coordinator, are being paid out despite not being listed on the extra duty schedule. We have had added positions up to this point. We have added them through a discussion in our labor management meetings. This is a biweekly meeting that facilitates problem-solving and collaboration between our district and OCEA. We have noted them in our extra duty schedule in HR, and the president and bargaining chair do the same, but have not added them formally to the CBA addendum, which is done when we finalize the successor agreement. We clean up that extra duty schedule and add any new ones that have taken place over the course of the contract or any that were agreed to be removed. For example, this year, we were able to fund high school cheer, swimming, and cross-country. We then collaboratively added the head coaches to the same category as other high school head coaches, and the same was done for high school assistant coaches. Our position is that these matters should be addressed through bargaining process in labor management and/or by appointed teams. We acknowledge a need for more formalized documentation, for a more formalized documentation process, and are actively and currently working on this issue in our successor bargaining. However, not being listed on the addendum is not a violation of the contract. I need a drink of water. One moment. My mouth gets dry when I have to talk a lot. Number 2. Inconsistent payment for similar responsibilities. Concerns have been raised about inconsistent payments for similar duties across the district, citing examples like the drama teacher, team leaders, key teachers, forensics, national honor society, national science honor society, and music positions. There was a committee in 2014 that reviewed all of the positions that existed at the time and placed them on the schedule. When we add a new position, we consider and discuss which existing positions are the most similar in terms of time requirements and responsibilities. We recognize that this schedule was implemented in 2015 and that these extra duty positions may have changed over time and need to be reevaluated. Last fall, prior to this grievance, we began gathering information and creating job descriptions for all stipend positions. Over 100 job descriptions have been completed. This is the first step in understanding the time and responsibilities of the extra duty activities. The next step is for the association to review and collect member feedback. Once we complete that step, we would like to establish a committee to reevaluate placement and compensation. Our response to this item is that this should also be addressed through the bargaining process and by appointed teams. We are actively and currently working on this issue during successor bargaining. The placement work, placement on the schedule, currently, sorry, needs to be addressed in the committee. In current negotiations, there is proposed language for Article 22 regarding forming this committee. We recognize that many of the current positions may have changed and that current pace, the current pay schedule, needs to be reevaluated, but this is not a violation of the contract. Number 3. No process for adding extra duty to the schedule. This concern was not originally submitted in Mr. Tukarski's amended Level 2 grievance or in the Level 3 request, however, I am very happy to address it. Currently, there is not a process outlined in the CBA to add or remove positions from the extra duty schedule. Our current practice is to discuss any additions at Labor Management, those are the meetings, and/or with the OCEA bargaining chair, to add any new positions and to determine where they best fit on the schedule based on similar work. However, I would like to note that in our research, looking for and creating the new job descriptions or the job descriptions for the work that is being done, we have found great templates that other districts use and a process that they can use to add extra duty activities and make requests for changes to those activities or those roles. As we continue to shape the work of the committee, the process for adding and/or removing extra duty stipends from the list are parts of the process that must be addressed. This is similar to the process we use with OSEA for reclassification requests. However, since there is no written process in the contract, there is no contract violation. I would like to address Mr. Tukarski's recommended remedies. Mr. Tukarski requests that the list be updated to reflect only current use stipends. When the successor agreement is finalized, the extra duty list is also updated. I would like to mention that the positions not currently filled are intentionally left on the schedule in case the duty is needed in the future. I cited the Medicaid billing as an example. It has been several years since we have done Medicaid billing. However, we would, should we reinstate the practice, which is typically associated with a grant, we would be able to budget for the cost of the stipend to do the work. This helps us in our budget planning and looking at what resources we would need in order to provide that position. Also, key teachers are one at elementary school that we have not used for several years since we've had a associate principal or a dean. But again, we've left them on the schedule just in case, for some reason, budgetary requirements change and we go back to using a key teacher. Mr. Tukarski requests that extra duty positions need to be moved to other pay categories, which, in Mr. Tukarski's opinion and the members' opinion, more accurately reflect the work being done. Again, this work needs to be done through understanding what each position entails, and I think we have a pretty good idea tonight that they are very complex and there are many hours involved, and then being evaluated in committee. We are in the process of gaining a clear understanding of each of the extra duty jobs before determining where adjustments need to be made. This has not been an issue of concern in labor management in recent years. However, now that it has been brought forward, we are working together to put processes and practices in place that will be clear for employees going forward. As I indicated, for context, labor management meetings are collaborative meetings that take place twice a month. During this time, myself, our HR specialist, and our associate HR director meet with association leadership and the field representative to discuss any concerns that might be coming up across the district. We use this time to proactively support communication and problem-solve issues that need clarifying. These meetings also ensure that we have shared understanding on topics that are important and relevant to our employees. Number 3. Mr. Tukarski requested, requests that the district either commit to accomplishing these changes through the bargaining process or implement them separately. We are currently doing both. It is proposed, there is proposed language in Article 22 for the formation of the committee that is currently in negotiations. And we have started the process of reviewing the extra duty schedule and the positions. We have been discussing for multiple years that this needs to be addressed in our new contract. So, this year, we worked on job descriptions as the foundation for discussing, discussing range placement. Another drink of water. Number 4. Mr. Tukarski requests that by the beginning of January, by the beginning of the 2526 school year, the district create a formal and clearly laid-out process for any licensed member to propose additions to the extra duty schedule. Most of this work should be done collaboratively in a committee and would gladly be presented to the board as requested upon finalization. Implementing such a process would make requests for extra duty clear for employees and create an equitable process for all grade levels. I believe that that is something that would be very helpful, and I think that that is work that is very valuable to everyone to get done. Number 5. Mr. Tukarski is requesting that in the future, the district not end payment for any extra duties nor add any extra duties to the schedule without written, without written agreement with the association and a public announcement to all licensed members of the change. Moving, adding, and removing positions from the schedule have always been done in collaboration with the association or, as in 2014, a committee for rearranging them. However, as with all positions in Oregon City School District, management reserves the right to fill them or not fill them. I do agree that we need to have a documented process where extra duty jobs are added or removed. This would look like an MOU or an MOA with the association if it's in the middle of a bargaining, like a contract year, within that contract. It will also make it very helpful for people who come after us to know what that process is, and that is, that is very important and good work to be doing. In closing, the concerns raised, additions, omissions, and inconsistencies in the extra duty schedule, as well as proposed changes to the schedule and the need for a formal process for additions and written agreements for changes, are best resolved through the collective bargaining process and through the work of the appointed committee. We recognize the need for more formalized documentation, and we'll pursue this through future negotiations. However, the lack of some of these more formalized processes still does not implicate an actual or real violation of the contract. We just finalized the job descriptions for the listed and newly added positions. As I stated earlier, OCEA leaders will review them and collect member feedback to then bring back and share. Once feedback is received, we will come together to edit and finalize. When that step is completed, we will begin the process of evaluating the placements on the schedule. We recommend creating a committee for the review and placement of the extra duty stipends, which is currently being discussed in negotiations, as I indicated. However, we don't have to wait for bargaining to be complete, and we can start this work now in collaboration with the association while we negotiate the successor agreement. Although we agree that this work needs to be done and we are making plans to address it collaboratively, the concerns expressed in this grievance are not a violation of the collective bargaining agreement. Thank you for your time.
Director Norman, it's my understanding you don't have any witnesses.
We do not.
Okay. So, Mr. Tukarski, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Sure, sure, yeah. A couple of quick things. So, first of all, a lot of time spent on this, the fact that leaving stipends on the extra duty schedule that aren't being paid out is common practice. I agree with that. That makes total sense to me. And so, you know, like removing those ones that aren't being paid, probably not that important. This is one of those things where we're all kind of learning as we go, and it didn't really make sense to change the grievance as I brought it forward to you guys, but, you know, that, so, live and learn. So, that point, I'll concede. This whole idea where adding extra duties happens in labor management because you have union leadership and HR sitting at a table, and they say, sure, let's do this. Again, I want to quote that first piece of the contract. It says, "Compensation for all contract extra duty shall be determined by the extra duty salary schedule in Appendix A and B." It does not say, unless you change your mind in labor management. It does not say things can be added in labor management. In addition, there's talk of these things getting added in labor management, sort of informally, and then added formally during the bargaining process. I believe the district and association have been through two or three bargaining processes since this was last updated, and those duties that were added in the interim, as far as I can tell, were not added to the official contract. So, they continue to exist in this sort of cloud. The other thing that I'll say, again, sort of, this really was a pretty good example of what I'm referring to. A lot of talk about processes and procedures. This idea that job descriptions, they've written over 100 of them. That's the first step. The first step of what? Throughout this process, I've never been given the sort of list of, here's how we need to do this, here's when the work is going to be completed. I've just been told, well, we got to do job descriptions first. Who's doing it? I don't know. When's it going to be done? I don't know. There's, again, reference to this committee. There is no committee right now working on this. There is labor management that works on it, but there's no extra duty committee. And again, the people who testified tonight were not involved in this process. This is the first time they've been able to talk to administration, to HR, to you guys about what they do. And I think you heard them loud and clear. And then, yeah, I would just say, again, there are remediations that absolutely can and should be done during bargaining. I'm keenly aware of this, and this process, I sort of view as going hand-in-hand with bargaining. And so, I think there's things that can be committed to being done in bargaining and done through this grievance, maybe even tonight, that would go well together. Okay? So, there are actions that can be taken outside of the bargaining process. Again, the district has added extra duties whenever they want, right? And so, the idea that we can't move the drama director up to the same pay as a head coach now, I think that's, you don't need a committee to figure that out. She does four plays a year. You don't need a committee to figure out that the speech and debate coach making less than the head coach is not okay. And we don't need it a year or two-year-long, again, I don't know how long process to figure that out. We know it right now. And then, finally, I want to mention again, the MOU that was signed. I'm hearing a lot of promises of future action here tonight. The MOU that was signed was also a promise of future action. It did not happen. It's been three years. That was a promise of a future committee, and it sounds a lot like that again tonight. So, I think there's actions that can be taken through this grievance process that would go hand-in-hand with bargaining. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Norman, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge that it is important that we have a process that we can use to add or remove positions from the, mostly add positions from the, that extra duty salary schedule. That is something that I think that we would all agree that we can work on and tighten up going forward. I do believe that the requirements around what that looks like should be done in a committee, which needs to be evaluated and what their process is going to be. There's lots of timelines and conversation around how to place those on there, but we really can't do that work until we have the job descriptions finalized and we know what those requirements of time and expectations for those rules are in order to be able to do some comparisons. do some comparisons. That would be the first step that we need to finalize before moving forward, which is something that we have already started and I'm very happy to say have completed at this point, just as of last week. So, that was a very large undertaking. I also just want to reiterate that many of these issues presented in the grievance, including additions, omissions, and inconsistencies, are inherently matters for the collective bargaining, to address through collective bargaining and the collaborative efforts of a committee. We, and do not necessarily reflect a violation of the existing contract. We recognize the importance of more formalized documentation and are committed to addressing these aspects through current negotiations and collaborative work, recognizing that there is room for improvement. That does not equate to there being a realized violation of the collective bargaining agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll transition to questions from the board. So board members, we'll do our best to take turns asking questions, and someone can just volunteer to go first if they're a burning question. You can ask questions of the presenters and the witnesses.
Lisa, where, you mentioned that for the extra duty roles, it's up to your discretion whether you fill, don't fill, add extra, et cetera. Is that specified somewhere within the CBA?
It is not specified specifically in the CBA.
Okay. Thank you.
Just related to that, are there any that are required legally? Like there was a feeding specialist, is that anything that has to be because of special education requirements or anything?
It would be placed on the salary on the extra duty salary schedule. Should there be a need for that? If there were a legal requirement for that, then that would be where the stipend, we would be able to budget for the stipend in that way.
But none of them currently are on there? Or there might be some on there that are required to be on there?
None of them are required. It's all about the positions that we fill, and so if there is an extra, like a, if there is a requirement for that position, oftentimes it is placed on the extra duty schedule and we don't get rid of it, should we have a need for it at any time, current or in the future?
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
I just want to make sure that there, if there's some that are supposed to be filled that are not filled, that we're not out of any kind of.
Oh, no. We, if we need to fill them, we would be using that. Yes.
There we go.
Yep.
Lisa, can you tell me a little bit more about the MOU?
Yes.
And what we have done to kind of meet the parameters of the MOU and what we haven't done? Thank you.
Well, the MOU, as Mr. Tokarski said, was signed in 2023 in the beginning when we finalized the 22, 25 contract. We have not moved forward with any work on that MOU, specifically because, as you recall, we came back from COVID in those years. Our contract was signed a little late and in labor management, those have not, this, as I indicated, has not been a topic that has come up as an issue of concern or urgency. And so, we have not moved forward with the work in that MOU. And, yeah, except for the job descriptions. We did, we have worked to get those, those at least we felt were the first step in being able to have meaningful conversation, is to identify what was already there, create a job description for all of the positions that are listed already, and then we would submit that to OCEA, just like we would with our other labor partners, and they would review it and get their member feedback to make sure that those job descriptions are accurate. So that's kind of where we've paused at the moment.
I can do a quick follow-up, which would be, so you've done the, the, excuse me, the job descriptions. How long do you think that process would take going forward if it was done outside of the bargaining agreement?
To give them to OCE? They're ready to go to OCEA now. It just depends on what their timeline would be to get those out and then get member feedback.
Okay. I guess I was saying like a general guesstimate of how, like, but if you can't make that guess, you can't make that guess.
I would hate to estimate their own timeline for that.
I want to follow up on that as well, and I want to say, whose responsibility was it to get the committee started from that MOU?
It's an MOU between both organizations, and I would say that I would assume partial responsibility for doing some of that work, as does OCEA assumes some partial responsibility. Those are agreements that we make together, so we bear the responsibility of doing that. Thank you.
And to follow up, I don't want to interrupt Pamela. Is yours associated with this question? Okay, you go first.
So, my question too is, Mr. Tokarski, did you guys ever approach union leadership about your, about your concerns? And I understand you are actually, you are the treasurer, is that right?
Yeah.
So you are part of that leadership?
Yeah. I, I'm on the executive team. I'm a treasurer and I'm a building rep. And yes, this absolutely was brought up with, with union leadership.
Okay. And the union leadership, did they, did you?
Well, I am, I'm union leadership, and this has been my process with this. I'll say that much.
And, but, so the MOU, I guess what I'm saying is, there, it seems to me, and believe me, I want to look all of you in the face and say, I value you, I believe in you, and I want to see this taken care of. But I'm wondering why, why you feel the responsibility is on the district for the MOU to have been
I mean, it's, it's their contract too. I, you know, there's no, you know, I do, I do the work that I do through the union and I have certain tools that I use, and the grievance process is certainly one of those. And that is, you know, a way to put pressure on the district to do the right thing. And so I guess, you know, I, I can't call, you know, Brenda up as a witness right now to, to speak to her, her piece in this, but I wasn't involved in the MOU. I wasn't part of union leadership back then. And I haven't really gotten a sufficient explanation for, yeah, what happened.
That's right. Yeah, and I, I'm not trying to be, if I said I'm just asking.
Yeah, no worries.
Questions? Okay, yeah, those, those were.
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up question? Director Norman, regarding the labor management meetings and your ongoing, or your recently completed work for the job descriptions, has the association been made aware that the district has been completing that work? And has there been updates at those meetings on this topic?
We have discussed the extra duty and, and we're aware it's on our agenda that we have been working on the job descriptions.
And at any point, was there, did the district deny the association the opportunity to discuss further?
No.
The job duties and extra duties work? Okay. I just wanted to.
Not at all.
I want to also, can I? Nevermind. I can't add anything. You have something else to say? Okay. No. Okay.
I don't think I can interject, so I'm not doing that. Go ahead, Alex.
Mr. Tokarski, thank you for being here tonight. I want to follow up on something that you said, which was you said that the district does what it wants, and you feel that, that you just don't get kind of the right say. And your concern with bringing this grievance is that, and not doing this through bar, with active bargaining, which, which we're about to start back up in two weeks, is that you don't feel, I guess I need you to explain why you don't think, like, do you feel like the district is not bargaining in good faith? Would be my question.
That, that would be, no, I don't think I'm ready to make that accusation. I think I could, I think the MOU is a big question in my head of sort of why that didn't get followed through on, and that strikes me as potentially, you know, I could say there might have been some bad faith involved there. But I don't, you know, like, I don't want to say that. I think the, the issue is, again, that, you know, we, we sort of pursued this issue in a lot of different ways with union leadership and everything, and what we were running into was basically, the best possible scenario was, oh, we'll have to take care of this after bargaining. It's too much of a heavy lift right now within bargaining. That's what we were told by people on the bargaining team. So, that's part of the reason why we thought maybe a little bit of a kick in the butt might be a good idea on this one, because it is really important. And so that's kind of what brings us here today. And then, this idea that things get accomplished, like in labor management, for instance, I've never been to a labor management meeting, nor have I ever gotten a transcript of anything that happens in labor management. So that's not a meeting that our membership is part of. But bargaining, again, I think the district is, has its priorities, which is different than bargaining in bad faith, and I don't think the extra duty schedule is on the district's list of priorities.
I have a follow-up question. I want to be clear, so that I understand as well, but clear, just so we're all on the same page, that labor management includes, I'm assuming HR, I don't know who else, and, and leadership from, from the union. Is that correct? I'm looking at both of you.
Yes. It includes the association president, as well as the field rep often attends, and then sometimes we also, depending on the topics, the bargaining chairs are also included.
Okay.
And it's just like we sometimes will also add teaching and learning to our conversations or student services to our conversations if there are topics that need to be brought up and addressed and they are better suited to answer those questions.
Would activities director also, at some points, that's a big deal?
Activities director at the high school or middle schools?
So I guess that is at the high school, right? Rather than the district. I always thought of that person as being district-wide, and I realize they're not. That's, I miss speaking on mine, but, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot which teacher had a copy of that MOU, but is it possible that we can actually see that?
It was also, it's, yeah, we can, it's okay, we can get it up for.
I got it right here.
It's as part of the addendum at the very end. Okay. That has nothing to do with that, but here you go. This is, you need to be on in the CBA, part of the CBA.
Director Stroh, did you have a question?
I mean, it was one just related to our, like, our legal obligations to follow this, an MOU. What are we?
Okay. So my, my follow-up question, sir, would be, at any point in time since this was signed, did anybody from your union approach the district about following up on this?
I would probably direct that question to the district.
We've talked about it in labor management, starting with the job descriptions, which is what we started, what we started the work on that early last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa, I have a question, which is, there's some really good points have been brought up, I think, about that pay disparity. And this is probably for you and for Dr. Spitzer. I've been hearing about, oh, Bob, I'm an obob coach, like, I don't expect, but I know that the people who, the teachers who work and do that work a lot of hours. And I think there is real concern about that pay disparity. Can you talk a little bit about why there is such a pay disparity between athletics and academics?
Because it's 10 years old.
I cannot speak to how or why there is such a great disparity. I know when they did the evaluation in 2014, when the committee was convened and they were looking at all of the job, just all of the positions on there, and it looks like they gathered a lot of information from the individuals that were doing the work, that they looked at the number of hours that they were using and the duration of time. So how long was the activity? And then how many hours were that, was that activity? I think some of the other information there indicated that there was, especially for some of the high school stipends had to do with, do you teach a class that it covers that particular activity? Or is this all outside of your, your workday? So, there are many factors that may or may not apply any longer to that. With regards to obob in particular, we have not had that discussion or even talked about obob.
If I could just follow up real quick, it would be, but these are things, these specific pay disparities, these are things that can and should be addressed in collective bargaining, correct?
Yes. Or to do a formal process to be able to review them all and have the criteria. We don't have any record of what criteria has been used in the past, other than what I can see on the, the forms that they submitted before. It's not even a form. It's a spreadsheet of some sort. We don't have any set criteria for that evaluation, which is something that I believe that the, going forward, we should make that really clear, and that would be kind of the parameters that a committee would, would look at.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm looking for, for active steps that we can take to move forward, because I, a lot of this, I, I agree with, I mean, those pay disparities are real and problematic.
Thank you.
I, I just want to reiterate, as we started diving into this, we discovered that there were no job descriptions. So, a lot of these stipend positions are at multiple schools. So if you were an avid coordinator or an educational equity chair, what are you expected to do? Because I know as a teacher and as a principal, there are things that I'd get really excited about doing, and I would do not only what I was expected, but even more, which is great. But we need to make our decisions based on what are the expectations for the role. And so whether or not you are at Tamwata or Gardner or at Case and you're filling the same role, serving seventh and eighth graders, we want it to be clear, like, this is what is expected in that role. So, when we started having the conversation about looking at this, the first thing is like, well, where's the agreed upon expectations? And they didn't exist. And so that was our first step, is to start working on these job descriptions. It's been kind of one of the key roles that our HR team's been doing over the last year is looking at other districts and creating kind of a set of expectations that we could use as kind of a, a starting point in, in our work with the union so that they could work with the, the teaching staff and those folks who serve in those roles, so that they can say, yes, that makes sense, or no, that's beyond what we do here in Oregon City, or that's not as great as what we do in Oregon City. I think there's lots of awesome opportunities, and I really appreciated hearing from the teachers this evening, just about all the things that they are offering for our students, and it definitely is something that we need to address. And I think having a job description as a starting place allows us to decide, is this similar or not? Because right now, it, it could be dependent on the person in the role and not dependent upon the expectations of any person in the role, and that's why those job descriptions are so important.
Katie, can I?
Yeah.
So, this is more a statement than a question, but it is sometimes very difficult in the last few years without throwing people under the bus. So, as a board member, I'm going to take the opportunity to say I believe that Dr. Spitzer and Director Norman are, and doctor, I keep wanting, call you doctor, you're not a doctor.
Director White, point of order. Can we hold statements until we get to deliberation?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. Are there any further questions? Yeah.
If, Ms. Norman, if we moved all the folks up to what Mr. Tokarski is suggesting, do we know the financial ramifications of that? And then if so, do we, are we able to budget that? Or are there other accommodations we would have to make in order to pay for that, so to speak?
I don't know the number that it would, how it would impact the budget at this time. Any, any changes to our budget have an impact, but I couldn't tell you how much that cost would be or what we would have to consider in the budget going forward.
Mr. Tokarski, have you done any of that math on your side of things?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Stephen. You said, I think the, the first, in, in my opinion, is what we need to decide if we violated the CBA. And then, we will decide if there's remedies and costs of fixing things. But you said that, when, you said one of the violations was that the district added thing, added stipends?
Mm-hmm.
And you said it nowhere in that said we can? Is that what you said in your closing statement? And you can look back at that, because you said.
Sure. It's, it's more about the, basically, again, that language, that the basically all stipends should, that are paid out should be in that schedule that exists in the contract. And adding to that would require changing the contract or an MOU or something like that, some sort of agreement, not a handshake deal, but a written down agreement. Hey, we think Avid's a really important program, we want to support it at all the schools, we want to add this stipend in category J. An agreement with the association to say, hey, we're adding the avid coordinator position that's written down in the contract, but that's not how it was done.
And, and the language, I think you said, it says nowhere, you said that, you said it, there's nowhere it says you can add stipends, the district can, and we just add them, but I don't see anywhere where it says it doesn't say we can add them. So I'm flipping the language on you for what you said.
Yeah, sure.
Because I think it's really important and I'm, I'm bargaining.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And I think what we put in the contract and what we don't have in the contract has just as much ramifications, so, and I- ...has just as much ramifications, so, and I know you sit and listen, and we've had discussions about Article 22 and bargaining, so you know we are doing some movement on there, and I'm...
Sure.
Kind of was curious, again, you sit in the leadership role in the union and chose a grievance versus the bargaining process, and I guess you've elaborated a little bit on it, but maybe you could, a little bit more.
Sure, sure, again, and I think there's a couple of things here, and I, yeah, the elaboration that I would say is, again, that line is, all extra duty shall be established by the extra duty schedule that's in the contract, right? So that is the contract as it exists right now, and it is being violated, in my opinion. And so it's a matter of, can we address these violations? And I don't think that the bargaining process is the only way to address violations, and in fact, the bargaining process is not for addressing violations in past contracts, right? It is, that's kind of what the grievance process is for. And so this is kind of like, you know, the bargaining process is a long process, it could take a while, we're, you know, we don't seem particularly close, honestly, on a deal. And so I'm thinking, like, that's a sort of longer process, and, but there's things that are really clearly, I think, not within the bounds of the contract right now, that can be fixed. So it's two tracks. I don't think this is oppositional to bargaining, I don't think this interferes with bargaining, it's a different track to get the district to do the right thing.
Thank you.
You did say earlier that part of your reasoning for wanting to do this was to kind of give a kicking on the butt to the process, was, I believe, what your quote was. So do you believe that this will have an impact either way on bargaining, and was that part of your intention?
I think it already has a little bit, and I think that's a good thing, and yeah, that was part of my intention, but again, like, yeah, I guess I'll just answer yes.
So I guess, I want to be real clear about what you're answering, how you're answering this, so just to say that you were using this grievance as a way to influence the bargaining process?
Let me, no, you're right, I should re-answer that question. No, the idea is, this is a way to influence the district to do the right thing, as is the bargaining process, right? So it's two tools in the union tool belt, to get the district to do the right thing, to get our drama teacher paid like she should be, for instance, yeah.
Do you have a question, Director Stroh? I have one follow-up question, I didn't want to cut anyone else off. Director Norman, could you explain the purpose of the Labor Management Committee?
Sure. Labor Management is a time for union leadership and district leadership to come together to preventively and proactively problem-solve around any issues that might be coming up for members, things that are happening in the building. We talk about all sorts of things, from professional development, to PLTs, to the heat in a building, to how we want to, how we're going to dismiss and close out the school year. So it's really a way of active communication. We meet two times a month, and our list is big, and we work through issues. Some of them are longer issues that might take some time, and other ones are shorter issues, such as the Student Services Grant that we received from the state. That was all something that we talked through in Labor Management, and then come together to find solutions to that, and make sure that we are thinking collectively about our whole group of employees.
So would it be fair to say that Labor Management is a place to discuss things that maybe there isn't explicit language in the contract to cover, so that everyone is in agreement as to what the spirit of that language might be?
Yes.
Okay, so in your opinion, the Labor Management Committee discussions around this work of extra pay duty, that was the appropriate place to start those conversations?
That is where we have started them.
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
That is, yes, that that would be the appropriate place.
Okay.
And Mr. Kotarski, you have not discussed this with your representatives on the Labor Management Committee, or have you? That's...
I have.
You have? And have they reported back to you from those meetings?
No.
No, okay.
I have a question for Lisa. In those meetings, are there notes taken, or is it...
Yes.
And are those available to people, or how would one know what's going on in those meetings, other than the people that are in the room?
From the district's lens, we share, the notes are shared, it's a spreadsheet that we keep track of who submits the request, and who, what the issue is, and then sometimes the resolution of that, sometimes it involves payroll, sometimes it involves teaching and learning, sometimes it involves insurance, and so we just keep track of that. That is not something that I share, outside of cabinet, or the people who need to be involved in those discussions.
And roughly, when did you start talking about, or when was a date that you talked about the extra duty?
Oh, I would have to go back and look, but we have been talking about it for over a year, as far as getting the first step of making sure that we know what the expectations are for all of those roles, because the list is large, and they're, when we don't have well-defined expectations, it's very difficult to know what are the roles of Gardner's Team Leader, versus what are the roles of Tamwata's Team Leader. So that has been something that we have been talking about for quite a long time, about what is it exactly that we need to have in order to be, to understand what those roles are. So that was our first step.
And then could you just clarify what you feel the process would be if somebody would wanted to increase their stipend, or challenge their, the stipend, move up, you know, move up the step on that scale?
I would have to say that we would have to discuss that, there would need to be some formal written request that would indicate why they thought, but again, without a job description, it's really hard to know what you are comparing from past to current, because we don't really have that information.
And just to clarify, speaking more to somebody in the past, if someone previously had wanted to have a discussion with their supervisor and/or you as the HR around some additional compensation for those extra duty.
Elizabeth would like to speak to that.
If I can help with this, someone wanting to increase their individual compensation could be considered direct dealing, and still has to go through union leadership to negotiate with district leadership.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Can I ask, can I ask the board a question? Is anybody, we receive emails of things throughout the district, not that I want any more emails, but I just looked at mine, and I, I know this is a, I've not seen one email about the stipends. Is anybody else?
I am not.
I am not.
I mean, from your group complaining about this?
Until now.
Until now.
Yeah.
I'm going to say no, to answer your question. No, I've never received an email. Have I had communications around it in other ways? Yes.
That's, thank you.
I haven't.
It sounds like we're ready to transition to deliberation, and Director White, I sort of cut you off, so I was going to let you start with, on the end, with what you'd like to say.
So I want to, I guess I want to, I can go back one step then, and say, I will say again to all of you, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for caring enough to be here tonight. Just so you know, we care enough to be here too, and so we want you to know that we are hearing what you say. And whether, however this turns out, it's not because we didn't hear you, we're down to a legal question at this point. And then the other thing I want to say, on behalf of our administration, who has now been with us two years, three years, or this is, or you're going into year three, right? Year four, gosh, I lost track. Year four. It is that it has been a crazy time, and that things that happened in the past are, sometimes they can't find, they can't find information, and so we just, I would ask that we work together towards making sure that changes. So that's my, I mean, if you want us to do more deliberations, and I have plenty to say, but I'll wait my turn.
I mean, right, we know that educators, people need to be compensated for what they, the work that they do, and the agreements, you know, that, around this list that's from 2014, 2015, is seriously outdated, it hasn't been updated with administrations or bargaining agreements. So I can see how they've lost faith in systems that have currently been in place. And then, when things aren't working, people leave, they burn out, that ultimately affects our kids. We know kids come to school to be in a play, to be in a performance, you know, to, that's going to, that's getting some of those kids to come to school, and so...
Every day, yeah.
I mean, as, as a teacher that, as kids say, crashed out, like, that, I just, you know, when it, there's enough, and that, please don't do more than you can, that, as, you know, educators, please have those parameters, so that if you have a healthy balance of work and life.
I think, obviously, it's really hard to deliberate on something like this in front of a room full of people, and that is part of the public hearing process. I think everybody here understands that Mr. Kotarski and his witnesses and all the people here that support him tonight are here for a valid reason. I, the pay disparity really, really concerns me, and the way that some of these processes were not done concerns me, the way some of these things could have been done way better concerns me. There's a lot of really valid concerns here, and at the same time, I do not, for one second, doubt district leadership's commitment to making a better district, and working for our kids, and working for our staff. So we're in a tough position here, this is a very serious topic, and my concerns about things, about, like, pay disparity are somewhat weighed by the ability to remedy that through collective bargaining. And so I am, I remain sort of on the fence and needing to be swayed, kind of one way or the other, in terms of the importance of going through this versus the ability to go through this through collective bargaining.
Can I just make a comment, too, that we are talking about what we think and feel, but the real question, right, I'm clarifying, the real question is, do these, is, does this grievance stand? The district responded to Mr. Kotarski and said, there is no belief that, that the CBA was violated, and so that's our question tonight. Do we, do we agree with that decision, or do we not? So I just want to make that clear.
Yes, the question is whether or not we agree with superintendent's decision that this was not a violation of the contract. Mr. Kotarski is claiming that it was a violation of the contract.
And so that's what we're deciding.
Yes. I mean, and to see the committee formed, and a timeline that has the steps, is ultimately something that we want to see regardless of...
Decision.
The decision tonight, and/or the collective bargaining.
Sure, and we have two board members on the bargaining committee. I have every reason to believe that the district and our board members are going to bargain in good faith.
I'd like to just mention, too, that I read the Article 22, Section B1, a little different than you do, because it says, "Compensation for all contract extra duty shall be determined by the extra duty schedule in A and B." And so A, I think, is this, I always get these mixed up, because the way that teachers are paid has all these little graphs, but my underst, I've looked at it ad nauseam, but I can never remember it. But I'm, I don't know, especially since, I don't believe that by choosing to create, and we actually talked a great deal, and they came to the board about those extra coaching positions, and what that might mean for, you know, investment in our, in our kids. And those were prob, I don't know for sure that they were, I'd have to ask, did, I'm assuming that your union, your union reps and our district looked at what other coaches were making, and made that happen, and that, indeed, if you could show me that they did not, that might be a violation, but it doesn't say they have to be there, just that they, that they are consulted. They, all contract extra duty shall be determined. So it's the determination that I see written there, rather than the fact that it has to be on the, actually on the schedule.
Can I see that MOU? You still have it?
It is in the CBA, at the end of the CBA.
You know, I want to speak to the fact that I'm really grateful everyone is here tonight. I understand, as teachers, public servants, the passion you put into your work and your extra duties, and I, I share the concerns that there is disparity in the positions, and I have a lot of respect for how frustrating that can be. And I also see a conflict between wanting us to agree with making decisions tonight about moving pay structures around, without having a committee, but also asking for a formal process in order to determine those next steps. And so I also share that conflict of thinking that the bargaining table is the best place to really start that conversation, and I understand the frustration and the reason you're here, that you shared, is concern that it's not, that it's not going to move forward. And I, as the chair of the board, we've had multiple discussions around our strategic plan, the extra duties that so many of you perform are vital to us executing our strategic plan, ensuring that our kids feel welcome and belong in our school programs. We want to have a robust offering of activities and services, to make sure every student who comes to school feels welcome and supported, and I'm so grateful that you do the work that you do. And I keep coming back to, I really feel like there needs to be, in order to come up with an equitable plan on how we're going to best compensate you, a bigger conversation to happen through bargaining and labor management, to really develop what that should be, so everyone has an opportunity to weigh in and feel heard in the process.
And where I'm stuck is, it says that there's a committee, that committee was, is formed, and the work's going to continue, but there's no committee. And so, like, that, I feel is disingenuous.
I have a process question, which is, there are three different parts of this grievance, but we are making one vote on the grievance as a whole, not each count of the grievance, correct?
It kind of depends on the board's decision.
That's right.
It would probably be best to find on each, if there's going to be different, either approve or denial, on each of those different counts.
So my question is, following with Director Blackwell, the MOU is an addendum to the contract, so that is part of the contract, and if we didn't follow through with doing the committee and doing the work, is that part of this?
Can I ask a legal question? If the MOU is signed by two organizations, does responsibility lie on, and again, this is just a process question for these questions, is, in other words, we know that the committee didn't happen, and that it hadn't since the olden days, and, but, that, is that, does that live on the shoulders of the district entirely, or does the responsibility lie legally in both parties? Thank you. I'm sorry it took so long to get out.
You okay if I answer that?
Please do.
All right. There are two signatories to that MOU.
Yeah.
And so there are two parties to the MOU, just like there are two parties to the contract, so, and responding to the legal process question, there's more than one party that agreed to the language there, and the duly authorized representation of the association is the one who is authorized to sign it.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't know how, how we
I mean, there, a clarifying, obvious observation is that there is not, Mr. Takarsky is not here in his capacity as a union leader. He's here as an individual. And so the union did not bring forth a grievance claiming violation of the contract.
Do you have some?
I mean, I don't, I guess I don't really under, like, this is the union back here.
Member.
I mean, sure.
In the same way that, as the board chair, I could share my personal views, but unless we agree as a whole, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. So we would have to take a vote in order for
Oh, yeah, our executive board doesn't vote, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so kind of a legal process question. There are authorized representatives of the union that are authorized by their membership to negotiate with the district board.
And
I don't, I can't speak to the union's bylaws or what those processes are internally, but they have their own process for doing so. And possibly Director Norman might know specifically who it is that's been authorized by the union to negotiate on behalf of the entire membership. I don't know.
That would be the bargaining chair and the president, the association president?
Thank you.
I'm not involved in the bargaining, so I don't know where we're at in that process. And I don't know if we can answer this question or not, but how confident that these alleged grievances in here will actually make it to the new CBA? And if not, is there any thought on what could be our course of action for that?
Are you asking, are you asking me, or?
Anybody who wants to say.
As, as a member of the bargaining team, I can say that I can guess this will be brought up.
It has already been.
No, but like, I mean, in more detail, I
Are we, are we confident that it's going to get done? Or is it going to sit there and be static for a while? Like, is this, I don't know what
That's not the question that's, that will, that's not the question we're addressing, though. I mean, all of these things we can, when we get to, after our vote, if we want to ask our district or even ask our union to do things, we can do that. But right now, what we're deliberating on is, do we, do we want to take each violation by itself? Do we believe that, because that's the question. We either agree with what the district, or what the district leadership has said to, to Mr. Takarsky in the letters and, and things that we received as part of testimony, or we choose to stand by it. And that's, that's the question. We could, we could take each one of them, there's three, right? And we could take each one and do them separately, if that's how we so choose them. I personally don't believe that the contract has been violated, so I could do either way if you all were more comfortable, but that's really the question. What we would like, the core values, we would like our leadership to go forward with, that's a different conversation or an additional conversation.
Yes, but we're deliberating, and if Director Pitts would like to get a better understanding of the situation for himself, he's free to ask whatever questions he wants.
I just wanted to make sure that we were, that we were clear on what the actual question is.
I, I think we have to figure out what's next, so we can, if we say, if we decide, either side, if we decide against the district, then there are, not necessarily consequences, not the right word for it, but there's a course of action which we can ask them to take, which is what led me to, what led me to my question, because if we have an MOU or whatever it was called from 2023, and I know there's two parties on it, but if we've been kicking that can around for nearly three years, that's not very reasonable. And if I was in an extra duty position, I would be pretty frustrated with that. So ultimately, whether, however we vote, I think there's a second thing, like, if we think it's going to be done with the CBA, that's great. But if we don't, I would like to lean on, we have X amount of weeks or months to figure this out, so we're not going in circles again for another three years. And I don't know if that's something we can do, but I would like
I, I believe we'd have to say the grievance.
Yeah, we'd have to settle the grievance first, but also, I think that, just for clarity, the MOU was signed in 2023. Director Norman testified that they've been working on the job descriptions now for, and discussing at Labor Management. So a process was started collectively between the association and the district over a year ago to work towards a solution for this. So I don't necessarily agree with it's been kicked down, kicked, the can's been kicked down the road
Yeah.
the entire time. I think that it's, sounds like it's been frustrating that it's taken this long to do that process. It sounds like it's a lot of job descriptions to draft, so I would imagine that's a lengthy, thorough process.
Yeah, that's miserable. I would do that, outside. So I totally get that. I just think that there needs to be some urgency.
Sure.
And I feel like although there has been a ton of work, we can move quicker.
And the collective bargaining is going to determine the rates, the compensation for those different steps, but it's not necessarily going to go through every position and talk about where the individuals are going to be on it? Or is that part of what the, that collective bargaining committee is going to do versus this other committee that would be formed?
It's a strategy discussion that can't be discussed today.
And that's, Ryan, so if I frustrated you that, I was just trying to bring that about. I completely agree with you that I think we should move forward and help make these things happen, but the, but if we, if we go ahead and make that decision, then we could choose, because once we've made the board vote, we can adjourn, or we could choose to, we have made that decision, and then we could choose to have another discussion or give our leadership encouragement. Yeah, or direction. Thank you, that's the right word.
I would personally prefer to split the grievances, but I don't know, do, if we would need to vote to do that, or how that process would work, so.
It's up to your board chair.
I, I haven't spoke, but for a bit, and I'm keeping, and I'm the, keeping track of everybody, so everybody's getting equitable time here. I just going through the, just down the violations and extra duty schedule, if it's on or not, it's, to me, it doesn't seem like it's a violation. In Labor Management, they added it. Responsibility is not compensated fairly or equitably. I believe that is of opinion, and I think that everybody has an vested interest here in their, their roles and their stipends, but I think you guys should be compensated fairly. And I know that the drama teacher has extra performances throughout the year, but to say that the football coach takes a, a time off is, is not being vetted, because you would, if it was in committee, you would know that there's winter workouts and seven-on-sevens and other, other stuff there, too. So I think the committee would be the place to vet everything out, because it, the people that are here and, and where the stipends reigned, you can kind of see a pattern. But I think it does need to be addressed, and it will be addressed. And since I've been on this board, we've been fixing stuff from the day when we got here, and this is another thing that needs to be fixed, and it'll be my commitment to fix this with the leadership here and the union and representation from you all. And there's a formal process, and I, it doesn't say there has to be a formal process, but I would think we should add that to the agreement. And I'm in agreement with you, but I'm not in agreement that it's breaking the
The violation.
the violation. And I like to fix stuff. I build stuff for a career, and I fix things all day long, and I think this is definitely needed to be fixed. And it's, you brought it front and center, and I thank you, but I think that the district is, is bargaining in good faith and has abide to by the contract. And I think we should send this back to the collective bargaining as, as it's being worked on, and we'll hammer it out, and we'll get those committees formed in a timely process. And I just, I know I went off, but everything we've done since I got here has been getting done, and I think this is something, thank you for bringing it, because it's, I'm passionate about not just the sports ends of it, but also every kid needs to have a home, and I know the drama teacher and everybody, the speech and debate, you guys do a fantastic job, and those kids are important, as, as just as our athletic kids, and some of them cross over. I heard we have a middle schooler that's a big kid that put, is on your drama. His dad said he couldn't play football because he's in the high school play. And he's one of the biggest kids, so maybe tell him he can do both. They need another big lineman. But anyways, that's my opinion.
Thanks, I want more.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say, to echo what he said, regardless of how this goes, there's one other thing that I want to thank you for bringing up, which is not ever talked about, which is the disparity between high school and middle school and elementary teachers. And I think that is something that is often overlooked, and I think it is something that should be discussed more, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yes.
And, and can I jump back in there? And I've been around for a while, and I know that some of the stipends were done on time and commitment, and some, some of the middle schools might have a teacher that does X, and they meet two days a week, but the high school meets five days a week. And those things need to be hammered out, because there is, just because the title is the same, doesn't mean it's, it's equity in the pay. And that, 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 that's what a committee would be for, right? Because we don't know who, who you got together on this and moved everybody around and did whatever. And I, you didn't take anybody off, which was admirable, but again, that should be you all coming together and us and agreeing on it. And I, I think that there's a wide, it's just not, hey, the elementary schools don't, we don't care about them. It probably was a time thing back in the day.
I agree. I just think, I mean, as the parent of two elementary school kids, like, like five of them equal a high school student, right? In terms of attention needed, so, you know, it's one of those things.
When you get a high school student, and I've had a few, you're going to know that they take a lot of time, too. So, all those high school kids back there.
Dr. Blackwell, do you?
Right, just ultimately, we can't have any more handshake deals or promises, like, they haven't been kept. So when it's something, a grievance is found to be, you know, warranted, then there is some teeth to it. Something's going to happen. It's not because we said it's going to happen. It has to happen.
It's not ambiguous.
I don't know what the parameters are to be on a committee, but I would volunteer my time for this.
Thank you. Director Hoppern, you mentioned an interest in breaking the decision tonight up into the three separate categories of grievance. Are there any other directors that feel strongly? And Director Hoppern, do you still feel in agreement that you want to do that?
I mean, I'm willing to follow the kind of will of the board on this one.
Are there any other board members that express any interest? We could, if Director Hoppern wanted to make a motion, we could explore that, or we could move forward with a vote as a whole.
Want to make sure I say the correct, because I think that we, that there, the grievous is grievance, thank you, the grievance is, is founded, that I agree with the grievance.
If you agree with the grievance, you would vote to grant the grievance.
Okay, grant the grievance.
If you disagree with the grievance, then you would vote to deny the grievance.
Can I ask you a question, Heidi? Do you mean you agree that it, we have violated the CBA?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll clarify. So if you believe there was a violation
Yes.
of this collective bargaining agreement, then you would be granting the grievance. If you do not believe there was a violation, then it would be denying the grievance.
Is there a motion from any board members?
I'll make a motion. Chair Wilson, I move to deny the grievance as presented by the grievance and delegate authority to the board chair to communicate this decision to the grievance and the district in writing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion from the board?
Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Stroh? Director Blackwell?
Nay.
Director Hoppern?
Nay.
Director Cantola?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the board before we adjourn?
Yeah. I think now it might be an opportunity, and I, I don't know if we need to make a motion to do that, or if we just need to agree, but we have decided on the grievance, and I agree that many of these needs to be addressed, and I guess want to make sure that, if this might be a good time then to say, as a board, yes, we would like to direct our leadership, and we can't direct the, we want to encourage them to
I think we could entertain that, but we just need to be careful that we're not overstepping our boundaries into telling Dr. Spitzer what her role is.
This is a portion we would like to go.
Sure.
And that if we do it as individuals, they can figure out where we're at, or if you want to, I don't know how you want to go.
Sure. I just, I'm open to you starting, Pamela, if you'd like to share, but I just want to make sure that we stay within our role as the board in directing Dr. Spitzer and what we'd like her to do.
Absolutely.
Because that is, our job is to direct Dr. Spitzer and not other staff.
Yes, that's right. So I, I would just like to say, at least from, from my point of view, that I trust you to move forward in this. I know, and I know that there are many things that you don't know until you don't know. And, and working towards this, it's true for us as well. So glad that you all came here and shared with us tonight. We will, I am committed to making, to following up in future board meetings and making, you know, just making sure that things are moving forward, because I know that is a concern. And I believe, I can only speak for myself, but I believe I sit on a board where the well-being of our kids and the well-being of our staff is a priority. And so we want to see Dr. Spitzer and all of, and consequently, those who are in leadership work together with all of you to create a place where we all want to be.
Director Stroh, did you have anything?
I would just like to say that I'd like to see leadership be open and communicating to us where your progress is, and same with the teachers that attended tonight. If you're feeling you're not still being heard, reach out to us as your board, so we can see it on both sides, because we don't always hear everything unless we're told.
Or unless we ask.
Or unless we ask. But I really want to follow through on this. I think this is a big issue.
Thank you. Dr. Blackwell?
Right, grievances and hearings, especially public hearings, are important to get information out there, right? To get, have your grievances heard. And yes, there needs to be action. Yes, we want to know if that action's not happening. And as Dr., or Director Stroh said, I, of two, I'm willing to, whatever I can do to help to make sure that the committee happens, serving on the committee, working, coming to the schools to talk to the teachers, whatever I can do to help make this happen. I'm very invested in this, because I do know that the extracurriculars make a huge impact on our students.
Director Hoppern?
I would echo that, obviously. And I would say that I really do hope that we are able to kind of move forward in a positive fashion on both sides, especially as we head into bargaining. I'm looking forward to this being a topic of conversation. I have faith in both our staff and our administration that they are coming to this with good faith, and they want to do what's best for staff, and they want to do what's best for kids. And I think we are making strides in that area, and we still have a long way to go. I also know that school starts in a week, so I want to thank all of you that are here, because I wouldn't be here if school started in a week, so. Wait, I am here, but disregard that.
Director Pease?
Thanks, everybody, for participating tonight. Really do appreciate it. I think it was a tough decision, and both sides had some really valid points. I hope to see resolution of this pretty quickly with our CBA, and if not, then hopefully we'll have conversations in the future and how to help out with that.
I'll echo all my, all the directors, what they've said. Super huge extracurricular guy. I think this is not just athletics, as everybody knows, or might not know, but I think I just, if we can expedite some of this along the way, as we bargain, and I think we can do it in tandem as we've worked through the contract, so. And look forward to hearing from y'all in the audience if we're not doing our job. So, thank you.
And I just want to thank everyone, too. I do make a point of trying to visit the association meetings, so I will continue to do that. I welcome your feedback on this issue and on any other issues that may come up. We want to be an ear for our staff. You guys do a great job, and we are very grateful for what you do. Also, I also meet regularly with Dr. Spitzer, and we'll be checking in on this to make sure that progress is made. Our commitment is to, to make sure that we execute Our commitment is to, to make sure that we execute our strategic plan, and you all are the tip of the spear that help us do that, and we're really grateful for the work that you do, and I look forward to seeing the resolution, the collective resolution of this, so that everyone feels like they've been heard in the process. So, with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.